So I'm gonna go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Education to order, and I need a motion on item 1A, please.
I make a motion to approve the August 14th, 2025 board meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to item 2 is our pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. So if everybody would please grasp. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to item 3 is communications. 3A is public comments. Anybody signed up this evening for public comments? Okay, perfect. Moving on to item 3B is our superintendent report. Mr. Brady?
So I'll start out by saying it has been a fantastic first two days in school. It honestly, it really could not have gone any better. So we'll start out with facilities. So I don't know if you've driven down by the soccer field lately, but there's been a lot going on there recently. So picture that you see there is they're actually, we've got the sidewalks installed and they're backfilling now. So if you haven't been down that way, I would highly recommend you do so. It's really taking shape. We actually started on construction of the new practice football field today behind the soccer field. And then, of course, like I said, the sidewalks and bleachers were also installed recently. So anyway, it's really looking good there, so we're very proud of it. Oh, and I left this off, but the other part of the CES mural was installed today, so I'm pretty proud of that as well. Some good news, MCPS recently received payment for the surplus balance of the unemployment program. So each year we pay an amount into the unemployment program. And if we were good stewards of that amount, then we typically receive a refund. And we received that refund of $29,071.15. So good news there as well. School nutrition. So the MCPS school nutrition department handed out 134,150 meals during our summer meal distribution. So it's always widely popular, and this year there was no change with that. So we did something a little bit different this year in focusing on employment wellness and continuing our work with attracting, retaining, and recruiting. So last Friday, MCPS hosted its first benefits and wellness fair, which included a catered breakfast along with 16 vendors on hand to share information with employees. We also gave away some prizes and two walking pads as well. So I think our staff got a lot of positive feedback on that event. They enjoyed the breakfast and obviously the information that was provided. The retirement lines were a little bit longer than I had hoped, but we didn't, no one retired as a result of that, so I'm happy to share that news as well. So some pictures from this summer, our first summer events. I just thought those were really cool pictures. So just proud of our first directors for organizing several summer events at our schools throughout the county. And again, they concluded with a back-to-school bash at Center Square. So our new employee breakfast, the Rotary Club, just want to give a big shout out to them. Thank them and Springview Hospital for sponsoring our employee breakfast at Rosewood. Quite a few of our community members who sponsored that event. So again, it's just, it's something that not every district does and not every community does. So again, it's just, it's refreshing to know that we have the support of the community in not only supporting us as a district, but our new employees. It's just so critical. So very appreciative of them. So we recently had an emergency management roundtable. And so thanks, Ms. Akers, for organizing that event. So we met with first responders to help prepare for the upcoming school year. Greg Smith from the Kentucky Center for School Safety served as the guest speaker for that event. And then we followed up with that. Ms. Akers and I shall share a little bit more information later. But Ms. Akers and I went back and had a follow-up meeting one evening last week where she and I reviewed each individual school site and talked about how we could better and better improve our safety at each school location. So again, just very appreciative of our first responders for what they do for us. Professional development. MCPS teachers attended a variety of professional development sessions and conferences prior to the start of the school year, focusing on curriculum, programs that we use, and then content-specific training. So again, I feel like we're well-prepared to start a very successful '25, '26 school year because we are gonna have quite a few curriculum changes this year. Preschool. Preschool starts August 26. Our enrollment numbers as of today are Lebanon Elementary 10, Glasscock 20, Calvary Elementary 38, and West Marion 40. We have 686 active in Dolly Parton Imagination Library and 1,476 graduated. So this speaks for itself, but look at the smiles on those pictures. It's just, again, fantastic start of the school year. I couldn't be more proud as a superintendent, as a father, and as a community member of our school district over the last couple of days. And finally, I just want to give a shout out to Lebanon Police Department and Marion County Sheriff Department for just providing extra support for the first couple of days. I was at Calvary Elementary this afternoon during afternoon dismissal, and I noticed one of our deputy sheriffs on hand at the church there by the entrance of Calvary Elementary. That wasn't something we asked them to do that for today. And you know, they were there to provide support. And it does not go unnoticed, the extra miles that they take for us. So again, just a shout out to our police agencies for what they do to support our school district. That's my superintendent report.
Questions, comments? All right. Moving on to item 3C is our Glasscock Elementary School student presentation. So Ms. Preston.
So this summer, we had, in addition to our FRC camp, we had a brand-new camp called Camp Invention. And this is sponsored by the National Inventors Hall of Fame. And so this camp is all about inventing and creating. And so some of our students that came to camp decided to come and show you their projects and tell you a little bit about what they did and what their favorite thing was at camp. So take it away, guys.
My name's Ashen.
We're gonna talk to them. This is our Board of Education. They allow us to do all these fun things.
My name is Ashen McElroy, and I'm a 4th grader in Ms. Burke's class. I didn't even know I was going to the camp. After my mom told me she signed up, me up for it, I was super excited. We got to see a presentation in the gym one morning before school. My best friends told me it looked really cool and wished he could go, too. That's after I told him I was going. On the first day, we gathered in the library. Our first invention was in Ms. McCubbin's room. It was a claw, but not a claw machine. I really liked the camp and would love to go again. Later we made-
Ashen, go ahead and explain, explain the claw.
So it was like made with popsicle sticks, pipe cleaners, cups, controls, and duct tape. And you had to lean over to get the pom-poms. Because like you could get those and they were like a prize if you got them. And mine was like, kind of tons of popsicle sticks put together, and then it had duct tape, and I leaned over and got the pom-poms. Later, we made a Morse code control panel, which I think is really interesting. You tap buttons on a little control panel shaped like a game controller. There were red and green buttons. It was really like playing a video game.
Ms. Stevens, wanna show them their controller and how it works?
Did it come like that, or did you have to assemble it?
We had to make it like we had to fold it and stuff and put all this stuff on here.
What's the stuff?
Like the, I don't know if these stickers are, but we put the stickers and stuff on there, and we put transmitter card and the receiver card on there. And we put the antenna thing on there, so that way it can connect. And here's how it works.
And Emery, what did you want to say about that? You want to come out here and show about this board?
Yes. So the green, so the green button is for the dot, the dash. And the red button is for the dot. And that's how you know that you are either sending a dot or a dash.
My name is Carter. I'm a 3rd grader this year in Ms. McCubbin's class. I went to Camp Invention over the summer in the library here at Glasscock. I was excited to attend camp because I was going to do things I've never done before. Adult stuff. I liked the inventions, the one with the frog and the mirror. I would do this camp again.
Hang on one second, Sophie. Go.
I brought my journal. Camp Invention.
Tell us about that.
This is where we keep all of our inventions and the directions to all of our inventions we've made.
My name is Sophie B. McCubbin, and I'm a 1st grader in Ms. Brown's class. I really wanted to go to this camp so I could build. I built this spinoscope. We had to draw pictures for the spinoscope of a flower growler. When you spin it, the flower grows.
So will you show us how that felt work? She'll tell them about what these little carts are. What'd you have to do on those little carts? What did you do on these little carts? What's around here?
Are they all the same? Are they different?
What's on them? And so what's the mirror for in the middle?
The mirror shows you what it's color grew.
And each one got to choose different pictures. They chose their own pictures to draw to represent a process or something happening.
My name is Hazel Rae. I'm a 5th grader, 5th grade, and I'm in Ms. Cox's class. I wanted to come to this camp because I'm curious, I'm curious about- I'm curious about how you invent things and how to like wire things from one thing to another. I wanted to come to this camp because I've never actually been to a camp where I've actually got to invent something like this. I brought a spinoscope, as you can see. It's a frog that is in motion, jumping. And it's just showing, whenever it spins really fast on there, it's just making it look like it's actually jumping in motion or reflecting off the mirror. That, and also on here, we also got badges throughout the week. And the two badges we got on here was the electric, electrical and engineer certificate. And then we also got an admitter certificate on there.
Do you want someone else to help you while you describe it, or do you want to do it? Carter, will you help her? Oh, wait, who's gonna help, who was gonna help you?
I don't care.
Whomever.
My name is Emery Kleppman. I am a 5th grader in Ms. Cox's class. My invention is the claw machine. It has so many cool features, such as you can actually work the claw. It has different designs on it. The logo I wanted to design was, has flowers. We went, we were able to design whatever we wanted. Okay, so, so this is the claw.
These strings right here, they, whoa. They were, these is kind of like our, like a rope. That way we can move this back and forth to get the prizes in there. And-
These strings show that if you like get the whatever prize you want, you pull the string up, you got a prize when you pull.
Almost. Just like the real nail.
And then you come over here, and you pick it up and take it over here, your prize. And then you put your hand in there and get what you dropped. I would like this, I like this camp. I would really like to come back again. It was a lot of fun. You got to really enjoy yourself.
And you didn't mind coming to school over the summer? Some like real school. This is a little brochure. This tells about the different activities that the kids did. And this is what we sent home at the beginning of the summer to kind of drum up some business for it. And so it shows a little bit about what they did. But each day, they got to build on their projects. It took several days to finish one project, and they learned about all the pieces and how they worked together. So I think the kids had a really good time. We had about 30 kids come to the camp, but I feel like it'll increase as we talk about it and drum up some more business excitement about it for next year. So we hope to do it again. Did you have something else you could say?
We also made, like, we were acting like we were going on a road trip with these. We also made a little AI assistance. We got to do it by ourselves. They were just springs, and we put like wherever you wanted as like the head. And we were acting like that if we could, we could make like a snack bar or whatever we wanted, and he would go get it for us while we were driving on our road trip.
What's the AI assistant's name? Did you name them?
Yes, we did. Put in brochure's name. But a lot of people did on their control panels. And they were all made however we wanted them to be made.
We used a lot of tape and glue, hot glue, and duct tape and all kinds of-
All the good things.
All the good things. And they got to, they got to do whatever they wanted to, to their projects. So it was all, it was all on them.
Was this just for one school or all school?
This time, since it was our first time, we decided just to offer it for Glasscock. But we, you know, we could possibly open that up. It is, the students pay. This year, we got a lot of scholarships. So some students pay full price, but most students got it at just for $25 for the week. And that helped to pay for the materials. Everything from the tape and the glue and the scissors that we used to the big projects was all sent from the company. We didn't have to provide any materials for this. All we had to provide was facility and the staffing. Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you guys so much. All right. Moving on to item 3D is our student recognition.
Is Harper Blake or Destiny Gruber either one here? Well, we just want to recognize those two. Harper Blake for being the student member of the Kentucky Board of Education, and then Destiny Gruber for the KET poetry competition. So just want to give a shout out to those two students. They were invited tonight.
Okay, moving on to item 3E is our attendance and enrollment report. Ms. Akers?
All right. So our enrollment of this afternoon, and of course, it doesn't include preschool yet. But at Calvary, they have an enrollment of 307 students. Glasscock has 345. Lebanon Elementary School has 272, and West Marion 365 students. Lebanon Middle School has 317 students, and Marion County Middle 283. Marion County High School has 862 students. YQC Spotting Academy has 148, for a total of 2,899 students. So our attendance for the month that I track, we don't have anything yet. Again, on the next slide, we don't have anything for the yearly, of course, that will come as the year progresses. Our attendance yesterday was 100%, and the attendance for the district today is at 97.72. I think last year was like 98.72, so really, really close. But 97.72 today. Okay, we are two days in. With 171 remaining. Our homeschool students, when we finished the year, we had 146 students that were being homeschooled. As of today, we have 136. So like Superintendent Brady was saying earlier, it's been a really big focus for school safety. While we had our July 23 meeting where we had all the principals, we had Greg Smith from the Kentucky Center for School Safety join us and kind of led the meeting. And we had emergency personnel, and we just troubleshooted and discussed kind of what, what are the goals for the school system? Then, as we do each school year, emergency personnel, we did a walkthrough of each building with the principal. We talked about their emergency management plan. We looked at a variety of things, such as water shut-off, where their AEDs are located. We had a session if there's roof access to the building. And, but we do walk through each building and have those conversations with the principal. And also, we attended the emergency management meeting for the county. And that's when we talked about where, where would a helicopter land if it needed to be at a school? Where would the shut-offs be as far as traffic? If there was an emergency event, you know, where would they locate trucks to stop the traffic? And I think it was a really, really good meeting. I love that we were focused on the school safety, and I continue, want to continue working with our emergency personnel and those resources to ensure we have appropriate procedures in place. Do you have any questions for me?
All right, moving on to item 3F is our finance report.
Looking at the month of July of '25 compared to '24, July's kind of a 40-month financial as far as this side goes, very busy submitting the honor of the AFR. So we got turned in time. If you look at the total revenues, pretty close, $4,700 difference at the 1.14 million. Interest rate's down a little bit. Our balance is pretty much the same, but the interest rate's down a little bit. So it left a little bit there. Sigs up again about $11,000 compared to last year July. Expenses, we are starting to see the biggest one we see there is we spent $76,000 more. Of course, we've got software costs, the non-back-in general fund that Ezra's has paid for, and some of the other stuff related to that. And of course, the paint maintenance, we've done a lot of facility stuff this July for some raises. And we also, this time last year, only still have one facility to pay for, or we have two now with a new building. So overall, we spent about $128,000, so we're about $133,000 less than we were this time last year.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 4, Student Learning Services. A motion on item 4A. So I'll make that motion to, apologies for the delay. I'm gonna make the motion to adjust adult meal price to the minimum required by KDE rounded to the next quarter when those rates are released. All right, Mr. Brady, do you want to, or Jennifer?
Yeah.
So if you just want to talk about why that is, I think that, you know, sometimes we get questions about that.
So KDE sets a minimum rate for adult meal prices based on what the USDA reimbursement is. And then there's USDA commodity foods they give us, and there's a calculation of that that goes into that minimum rate. KDE has not gotten all of that information from the USDA yet, so they cannot set the rate to give us yet. Generally though, adult meal price runs about a dollar more than what our reimbursement rate for students is. And we're asking to round it to the next quarter because, so we're dealing with dollars and quarters and not, like, for this year's, this past year's, I went with $4.85, and nickels and dimes got a little crazy. So we're asking for the next quarter, rather.
Other questions for Ms. Williams? All in favor? Aye. I need a motion on item 4B, please.
I make a motion to approve, for approval, of shortened school day for student number 01-026.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I need a motion on item 4C.
I'll make a motion to consider approval to add the following programs to our electronic communication system. I'm gonna name them two. Edmentum, Infinite Campus, Google Classroom.
Is there anything that you want to share about this addition?
Yeah, so I mean, I think this will continue to be something that we bring to as programs come up and we find out that staff like want to add additional programs. It'll be our recommendation to do so. But the programs that you see mentioned tonight do have the capability to do communication individually with students, so that's why. They're not programs that we use a lot as far as the communication with individual students. But occasionally, it may, it may be that private communication. So we just want to ensure that they're approved and above board in compliance with Senate Bill 181.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. I need a motion on item 5A, please.
Consider approval of Pay Apps number 4 and 5 to Escola LLC in the amount of $89,561 for work performed at the Marion County ATC partial roof replacement. I motion to approve Pay Apps 4 and 5 and to withhold 100% of the amount due under Pay Apps number 4 and 5 as allowed by Section 3.3 of the contract and Sections 1.16A and D of the supplementary conditions without waiving any additional claim for liquidated or other damages which may be owed by Escola.
I'll second. Mr. Brady?
Yeah, so Randy's here tonight, too, but I can, I can give you a description of why this is. So in our contract and then the supplement, there is liquidated damages, which equates to $1,000 per day, per project, until substantial completion was done. And then beyond that, $500 a day per project. So it, within the scope of the contract and in the supplementary conditions that are listed, it's our recommendation to withhold 100% of the Pay App that they requested due to the money that we feel that they owe for liquidated damages.
Is there anything you wanted to add, Randy?
No, you're exactly right. Escola has completed the work, but it took them an extremely long amount of time, well beyond their contractual dates that they had for both substantial and final completion. And that is exactly what the contract is written, and why that's written that way, to protect you as the owner against other contractual hardships that may result from them not completing that work.
So the completion date was supposed to have been August 1st of '24, and the final completion date was June 17th of '25.
They were several months late.
Any other questions on this one? All in favor? Aye. I need a motion on item 5B.
Consider approval of Pay Apps 4, 5, and 6 to Escola LLC in the amount of $77,325 for work performed on the Marion County Middle School partial roof replacement. I motion to approve Pay Apps 4, 5, and 6 and to withhold 100% of the amount due under Pay Apps 4, 5, and 6 as allowed by Section 3.3 of the contract and Section 1.16A and D of the supplementary conditions without waiving any additional claim for liquidated or other damages which may be owed by Escola.
I'll second.
All three, just grab the Terry on that one. All in favor? Aye. I need a motion on item 5C, please. I'll make a motion to consider approval of Pay App number 11 to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of $109,310.95 for work performed on the Glasscock Elementary Masonry and Window Replacement Project, BG number 24-122.
I'll second.
Everything looks wonderful. Any questions, comments here?
The status as far as...
It's Ashen for the work of Marionville. You remember the, we can probably change the order in this project. It's work that's completed in Marionville.
But to answer your question, it's progressing very nicely. Uh, most of the exterior work, uh, is complete, just a little few final wrap-up items. And then, uh, they will, in the coming weeks, be pulling the dirt back from the back of the building and then waterproofing and putting the dirt back. And that'll be the final step.
Other questions, comments? All in favor? Uh, I need a motion on item five D.
Make a motion to consider approval of Pay App number eleven to C M T A Energy Solutions in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and five dollars and eighty cents for work performed and four thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents for materials on the Marion County Middle and Glasscock Elementary HVAC Placement Project, BG twenty-four dash four fifteen.
Second.
Any questions, comments here? All in favor? Uh, I need a motion on item five E.
I'll move to consider approval of the BG four for the Marion County High School Practice Soccer Field, BG number twenty-five dash oh-six-six.
Second.
I would invite everyone to make their way over to the practice soccer field and beyond because boys are kicking off their season tonight and they're gonna, um, they're playing Thomas Nelson High School um, and hoping for a big win over those guys. So come on over and cheer on our boys. Um, other questions and comments on that project? You want to provide, I mean, I know you mentioned it in your superintendent report.
Yeah, it works, progressing nicely. Uh, we're actually pretty much in the final stages of the work there. Uh, as far as the dirt work and the, the, uh, sidewalks and it, it really just looks fantastic.
It really does. I'm excited to, to see it continue. And, um, so the next step after this would be the BG five to close out that project, but we're probably still some ways away from it, correct? All right, all in favor? Uh, I need a motion on item five F, please.
Make the motion, consider approval of the revised BG one for the Marion County Schools' six outdoor classrooms, BG twenty-three dash three twenty-eight.
Second.
Yeah, so I'll talk about this. Uh, so the reason that we're requesting the BG one to be modified is due to the funding that was used for that project being ESER. And we just want to make sure for future audits and such that the actual amounts that are listed, we did have some uh, remaining money that was left over from those projects that was utilized through other approved ESER amounts. We just want to make sure that everything is accurate and reflected as such.
Any other questions there? All in favor? Uh, I need a motion on item five G.
Make a motion to consider approval to accept bids for the Marion County Schools' parking lot, BG twenty-five dash three-four-five.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, I need a motion on item five H.
Move to consider approval of awarding the bid for the... Of awarding the bid for the Marion County Schools' parking lot, BG twenty-five dash three forty-five. And the award will go to McCain Brothers Excavating LLC in Springfield. The amount is three hundred forty-two thousand forty-five dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Um, do you want to talk about what this project?
Yeah, so, uh, this is a project that we're pretty excited about. Uh, I don't know if many of you have been to the high school parking lot during the morning hours when all of our students are there. Uh, but our, our high school parking lot's pretty crowded. So, uh, our initial thoughts were that this would be a parking lot that would potentially be used by Marion County High School staff, Glasscock, uh, staff and overflow. It could be used for ball games, basketball games at Marion County High School, uh, baseball games. It's just a really convenient location for additional parking. Uh, it's going to be in the nineties, uh, ninety-nine, I believe, net, uh, increase in space. So it should be a really nice, uh, addition to both, uh, Glasscock, uh, baseball, the high school. Uh, it, uh, it, it just should be a really nice addition. So for those of you who may not be familiar, it will be in the field that is in between the rugby dome and the, and baseball and then on to Glasscock. So in that grassy area is where this parking lot will be installed.
Any questions on this? All in favor? Uh, I need a motion on item five I, please.
Make the motion, consider approval of the revised BG one for the Marion County Schools' parking lot, BG twenty-five dash three four five.
Second.
Do you want to talk about what this?
Yeah, so, uh, in our, initially when we did the BG one, we added, uh, we added a few spaces to that. So it did obviously come in a little bit over what the initial bid is, so it's just again to accurately reflect the amount.
Any questions? All in favor? Uh, moving on to item five J, I will make a motion to consider approval of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six tax rates and adopt a tax rate of fifty-seven point four cents on real and personal property to include point one cents exonerations and fifty-two point six cents on motor vehicles.
Second.
You guys want to talk about this for the people who weren't?
Yeah, so, uh, good news here, it, uh, is actually a reduction of point three cents per one hundred dollars in assessed value. Our real estate value last year was fifty-seven point seven, uh, cents per one hundred dollars in assessed value. Uh, per one hundred dollars in assessed value. And, uh, this year's going to be fifty-seven point four. So we're recommending fifty-seven point four, so a reduction.
I think we continue to be in a positive, uh, position with the tax rate as our assessments increase. And we're able to continue moving the individual rate down year over year. And it's really a win-win-win for everybody, for the district to generate that additional revenue um, so that we can continue to do all of the things like we've been doing. Um, and continue to improve our campuses and our academic construction and provide lots of resources. So, um, like I said, win-win-win for the community and the district and the individual taxpayers too. Questions, comments on the tax rate? All in favor? Uh, moving on to item five K, acknowledgement of field trips. So acknowledged, and I need a motion on item six.
Make a motion to approve student learning and support consent items A through J. Couple of thank yous to some of our supporters. Uh, want to thank Tribe County Kentucky United Way for five thousand donation for the backpack program. Very special thank you to our neighbors here at Kentucky Coop Ridge for their donation of ten thousand dollars for the Marion County Football Bowl. And also thank you to W A S Crusade for Children Grant for a thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
We appreciate our partners.
Thank you all. All in favor? Uh, aye. Moving on to item seven, acknowledgement of personnel actions. So acknowledged, and I need a motion on item eight.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that this meeting be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, aye. Thank you very much, everybody.